I call the October 6, 2020 Regular Meeting of Council to order. Councilman Marn will give the invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community represent.
The United States of America, the Republic of which stands on the nation under thy invincible liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I want to welcome the public to this City Council Virtual Public Meeting. And for the first time in about six months, all of council is at the dais. And before we give roll call, I just want to point out that the reason we it appears we may not be distancing is that we have Plexiglas between us. So that eliminates the need for us to wear masks and for allows all of council to be at the dais. Welcome back, council. Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Marn.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mrs. Dowling.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Landik.
Here.
If you are attending through the published WebEx link, you will notice a window open on the bottom right-hand side of the screen entitled Q and A. This window will have opened five minutes prior to the start of the meeting and will remain open for 10 minutes after the meeting begins for a total of 15 minutes. During that time, if you wish to address council at a later point in this meeting, please type your name, address, and the topic you wish to speak about. This is the only means for you to schedule your participation since the public cannot physically attend in person at this time. At the appropriate time during the meeting, I will recognize you and you will be unmuted. You will be printed to make comments to council on the topic you requested to speak about. If the topic is tonight's public hearing, please also type whether you are speaking for or against the topic in order to be recognized in the proper order. If you wish to comment on another item on the agenda, you will be recognized when that item appears on the agenda. All other comments unrelated to the agenda will be heard near the end of the meeting during the persons before council portion of the agenda. Please make your speaking request at this time, and thank you for your virtual participation. Approval of minutes. Council, you receive the minutes of the regular meeting of September 15, 2020.
Who do approve?
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
The minutes of September 15, 2020 Regular Meeting have been approved. Public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. This public hearing is being held pursuant to notice duly published and posted according to law. Ordinance number 20-0-075.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Menor 2006 as amended, Sections 1127.01, 1161.01, and 1161.04 to modify regulations and add definitions related to outside outdoor storage and display of goods and materials in commercial, industrial, and other zoning districts.
Mr. Philippiak, would you please provide a description of what's being requested?
Thank you, Mr. President. What we are proposing, this has been reviewed and approved and forwarded to you from the Planning Commission, is something that the I think both council and the administration has been hoping that we could get get some work on for several years now. Essentially, it addresses the issue of outdoor storage and display of merchandise in both commercial and industrial areas. The Planning Director, Ms. Mitchell, has done a great job of modifying this. They've been working through this diligently with Planning Commission and the administrative staff to bring you revisions that we think address a number of the concerns that council has had over the last several years. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mitchell. She's going to give you a short PowerPoint on this and then open it up to questions. Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. As he stated, we have three separate sections that we have focused on. At the heart of the of the changes that I'd like to really talk about this evening are in Section 1161.04. We obviously have a set of definitions that you have before you and some ancillary changes that are in 1161.01, but the PowerPoint will kind of guide us through the meat of it, which talks about a lot of the issues that we've seen and addressed even long before I've gotten here, but items that are important. And what we've hopefully done is is taken what was essentially a paragraph of text and expanded it for the benefit of the administration and the commission to enforce and to to guide applicants and business owners and residents if so if it's applicable. But the goal is again to be more comprehensive. So with that, I just want to go and again just briefly touch on we have established a set of purpose statements that you can see on the first page of 1161.04. And those again kind of set the framework for what we are hoping to accomplish with the regulation of the outdoor storage and display. And this again is limited to the commercial and industrial zones. Then we've also highlighted what has been a longstanding policy and has been implied in the code, if you will, but the outdoor display regulations are limited to those events that are temporary events as regulated in other sections of the code, which you see in 1161.04B. We were also talking about vending machines and cold storage units, i.e. the where we place at where you see maybe at a gas station, the placement of freezer for ice bags and so forth. We want to be able to give the Planning Commission guidance if these do come forward, that we have parameters on where they can be located on site. You can go back to the beginning. Way at the beginning. Okay, that's good. And with the vending machines, again, we're talking about if you want to provide them, we want to see them on a site plan. We want to know where they're going to be located and that we may provide some additional guidelines in terms of where they're placed and possible appropriate screening. So let me get into a couple of the sections that are maybe some of our more hot button issues, which go to the next slide. Outdoor collection bins, they have been regulated in the code over the years, but this section is intended to give some greater guidance again as to location. And you're going to see a consistent pattern with each item. We talk about location, we talk about screening, we talk about number of units, if that's applicable, we even talk about signage. But we break it down so that there is no question as to how they're regulated on a particular site, the expectation of maintenance, and also I think in this particular case with collection bins, screening is really important. You can see on the left side with the first picture, this is an existing bin. It's located on a rather large parcel within the city. It's obviously in use. They do get a lot of use, however, it has no proper screening on it. The one to the right is an example of how we'd expect the screen to be provided. That one actually is no longer there, I believe, but it was an example of one that was approved in prior years. It's got the signage on the outside of the screening to at least indicate to a user where it is, however, it's appropriately screened for aesthetic. So moving on to the next item, this is an extreme, flip to the next slide. This is a new item that we wanted to clarify and add to the to the regulations. It's a little bit of a mouthful, self-service parcel drop-off pickup boxes or locker. In the short in the short form, we're talking about the FedEx UPS boxes you see all over the city. We've really never regulated the location, and we're not intending to do that when they meet these specific, excuse me, size parameters. If they're three feet wide, five feet high, then we're not going to be subject to Planning Commission. But what's become more popular and what's become more in demand are these lockers that folks are actually using, and you actually can see them in a lot of inside businesses in the malls, there's a few of them. But we're getting requests to have them located on the outside of properties. So the idea here is that people don't necessarily want to have their their parcels left at their house all day, so they want to have a location that's more secure. And it may not be convenient because of store hours that are limited to be able to go inside a store. So having them outside, you have that 24/7 access is is something I think that's going to be what we're we're going to see more and more. So we wanted to be able to be proactive and put some regulations in place. This is an extreme example, obviously, it's not within the city, but it's an example of what we can expect. The Amazon and UPS lockers are what we're really getting the request for. This is one that shows you've got the there's a security camera on it, there's lighting provided. On the on the next slide, you can actually see, this is some information we found online. They can they can start at six feet wide and then they can go to 15 feet wide, but you can see they have a number of lockers there that you you are given an access code and then you have the ability to access them on your own. So what we've done is provided again regulations regarding we want subcutated colors, we want to know that they're located on the side or rear wall of a main building. We don't want them to have be visible from a roadway. And we want to have appropriate screening. So this is an example of what we're trying to again anticipate in the future, if you agree that this is something that we want to see regulated moving forward. Again, we have also noted on page three at the top that the drop-off only boxes that are three or less in width and not higher than five feet are not subject. This next item is obviously a hot topic that we've discussed at length. And I think the idea here, and this is a good example, and this is why I think what we're trying to achieve, when we have outdoor storage, particularly of live plant stock, what we want to see is we want to see that it's it's properly contained, it's up against the building, and it's properly enclosed. It's not a freestanding area of the site, and it has again attractive screening with the combination of masonry and the aluminum fencing. So when we have in the Section G, we talk about when you have just exclusively live plant stock, you can have that combination screening, and it can still be nicely done. They actually just were before the Planning Commission this past year, and they're going to expand it. Their their outdoor storage area is doing so well, and we expanded it based on the parameters that are already in place. Now, when you get into, you can turn to the next slide, when you get into the type of storage that's a little bit more combination storage, so you have either palletized storage or the materials that are pre-wrapped, they're intended to be on the site for long periods of time. As you know, we've had problems with this in the past. What we want is again, this type of storage to be located up against a building, inside or rear of the building, not against a public right-of-way. We want to see it properly enclosed. So the screening on the left shows you've got a combination of both the palletized storage and if you, as you know, if you go into this particular area, there's also live plant stock on the inside. This is an example of obviously the screening's higher, but it's it's the the materials are contained and they are left inside only, and that is what we're trying to achieve. We don't want to see what you see on the right is the storage on the outside exposed without any proper screen. So that's what this is intending to do, and that's what we talked about under Item G3, is that when you have the more palletized storage, the wrapped material, we want even more screening, want solid masonry or solid vinyl fencing, something that's appropriate and compatible with the existing building that will ensure that that the aesthetics of the site are maintained. Now we can get into outdoor storage in industrial districts. Did have an existing section, which was 1161.01A, Item 15. This essentially replaces this section. It kind of goes into a little bit more in-depth again of how we want to see this storage. This is an example of what we want to see. So on the on the left side is an aerial view of an existing industrial business within the city that has properly screened all of their their outside storage. You can see on the parameter there, the the screening wall, and on the right is the front view from the right-of-way. It is it is attractively screened, it's got the security gate, and you don't see any of the storage materials above the screen wall. And that's what we're again, we're trying to achieve with this regulation. So that's what this has done. We talk about the security gate, we talk about solid walls with the industrial areas. The next slide will show you an example of what really what we are trying to avoid. What we're trying to avoid is when you're looking from the street, we don't want to see all of your materials stacked above the fencing or screen wall. We don't want to have that view. It's unattractive, and it has a negative impact on the neighbors. So that's what we're trying to avoid by establishing these regulations. Again, it's clear cut for all of the businesses so that they know what's expected if they want to do. And of course, there's a need for outdoor storage in these industrial areas. So that's what the Item H is intending to accomplish. And if you see under Item 2, that's an existing section that is just continued, talking about when you have sand gravel or other types of substances. Those are already regulated in another section, so we're leaving that be. Move on to the next section, you can turn to the next slide. This is outdoor propane sales and exchange areas and above ground tanks. Again, it's an item that we commonly see and has been reviewed in the past, but again, it spells out the regulations. We have a set of general requirements that refers directly to the Ohio Fire Code, talks about that the fire chief has final review of these storage areas to make sure they're safe. And then we break it down and we talk about how we want to say that if you have a propane area, and this is an example of appropriate screening, so at this Ace Hardware Store, you don't even know that the that the propane area is behind that screen wall, and the screen wall matches the parapet wall on the building, which is again what we're trying to achieve. So so in addition to the cage that's that's around the combustible area, then you have the screen wall, but still providing access to the area. This just spells that out in a little bit greater detail. You go to the next slide, we talk about these types of areas are obviously they they exist, and and we want to make sure that we regulate them property properly. And on the left side, I think the purpose of showing this is that this is a vertical tank. We want to see the horizontal situated tanks that's shown on the right, and we want to again properly locate them on the site and provide proper screening. So this this section just does that, it spells that out, and again provides for the appropriate screening information and and any other things that we don't want to see in those areas, like any kind of combustible materials, et cetera, that need to be kept free and clear of that area. The last section is an existing section of the code, which we did not modify. It talks about the temporary events. Again, this basically just acknowledging the fact that you can have temporary events, but they are limited. They're limited in number of times per year and the length of time that they're allowed. So this is an existing section that we have left as is. That's the gist of it. And if when we have the open open discussion time, I'm happy to entertain any questions. Hopefully you had attention to read the definition as well.
Thank you. At this point in the public hearing, we would entertain speakers for and against. I see no one on my screen has for Q and A, correct? Excuse me? Okay, another item on the agenda. Okay, so having no one to speak for or against, council is in receipt of all correspondence and emails received pertaining to this matter. This public hearing is adjourned. Able legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 20-0-075.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Menor 2006 as amended, Sections 1127.01, 1161.01, and 1161.04 to modify regulations and add definitions related to outdoor storage and display of goods and materials in commercial, industrial, and other zoning districts.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kirchner.
I just had one question for the administration on the temporary events. The the code calls for, does it call for some type of a structure or enclosed area to be covered of some sort other than a tent? I remember one, one of the big boxes, they had like a split rail around the area where they were doing one of their temporary events.
Not required, it's not specified.
Okay.
You could add something if you prefer.
Well, I know they're not, it shows not in driveways, fire lanes, or it could be in existing permanent driveways or fire lanes. Is that correct, or parking or driveways or parking areas?
When we receive a temporary event application, we do route it for internal review. So if there are any indications, for example, the fire department, if it is located in a fire lane, they're going to they're going to not approve it. So we would we would stipulate that that would have to be prohibited.
So the one, you know, the one I'm talking about, I think that was at Home Depot has one, and I know they have like in their parking lot, they have, but they have a split rail around it.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's been apparently that's been an event they've had for quite some time.
So that's what I was thinking, we don't really specify that in this this code, that some type of, there should be some kind of barrier around it. I mean, temporary, not to add a significant cost or anything, but something, you know, so someone does it, comes up in a car or something, it's in the middle of which the Home Depot one is in the middle of the parking lot. So there's some type of safety factor.
President. Just elaborate a little bit to Mr. Kirchner on that issue. So similar to what we're doing right now with some of the temporary outside dining that's been approved through the Planning Director's Office, that council gave temporary authority to allow, we've been, we try to be very careful to, as Ms. Mitchell said, bring in the other department managers, in particular, the safety department, so the police and the fire department representatives, to comment on how we can set some of these activities up, which are right now very temporary in nature with some with the outside dining as an example, to make them as safe as possible. They'll never be as safe as some of the permanent contingencies that we have in place, such as outside bollards and, but what we're trying to do a better job of is make sure that they are not in traditional driving lanes, that they can't, that there's adequate distance and signage and safety protocol set up so that at a minimum, drivers can accidentally in any way veer into those areas. We're trying to avoid like blind spot areas. So I think we've learned a few lessons from the temporary authority that you gave the Planning Director on these outside events because of pandemic-related stuff, and I and I think we would want to try to apply that in a similar manner. Essentially, we don't have those standards directly in store, but we can make a certainly make a list of those things that we would want to check off to be careful of any time the exercise of that authority for these temporary events is utilized. That's a, I would almost look at that as somewhat of an extreme example, the one that you gave. And most of what we see is, say, Marx is selling some outside plant material for those seven-day period, those two seven-day periods, for example, that are that are allowed right up against the the wall of their of their building. We see that more typically. Some of the big boxes, without naming them in particular, as you and I have discussed in the past, have tended to go maybe a little bit overboard with some of their desire to get some of that seasonal material out there. I'm really pleased that I think we have addressed a lot of the concerns that council has voiced over the years with respect to moving forward with these activities on new construction and new permitting for for this. So I'm hopeful that you won't see that example in the future, but we can also work with council, whether directly through work session or on a committee level, to try to create some guidance that you might want to offer to us in terms of processing those applications. Happy to do that.
I trust that the administration going through that process of the different departments would, if there was an issue, or that they thought there might be some need for that. I just wanted to clarify that, so.
Mr. President. Mr. Donovan.
Kathy, I had a question on the large Amazon and UPS containers. What kind of leverage do we have on where theirs where theirs would go? And I think they almost belong in an industrial area on like Tyler Boulevard or something like that, and maybe on a one property with with, you know, you pull in, it's all lit up, you have UPS, Amazon, and they're all in a group. I don't find it too too inconvenient for anybody to have to come off Menor Avenue, or you know, you could put them on Heisly, but in the mall parking lot or places like that, I think it's a little, it's a little much. It looks like a dumpster almost, you know? They're huge, you know, some of them are huge. Is in this language, is there any kind of leverage for us to deny those or decide?
Well, we certainly, we don't have street-specific, you could, you could certainly do that. We only have it site-specific as to on the side or rear wall of the of the building. But if you wanted to say, you know, that they would not be permitted on parcels along Menor Avenue, I think that would be something considered. I don't know how the law department feels about that, but.
Could we say industrial area with that language?
Mr. President, so I think that that would be a question that we would want to ask the Law Director to look into. Can we, it's a commercial activity, you know, is it, can you restrict it from our business districts? I think we'd want Mr. Zeeman to look a little bit more closely in that at that.
Mr. Zeeman, you need time for her to get an answer on that?
Yes and no, because it sounds like there's there's potentially two issues. There's the smaller collection boxes, which would be administratively approved. I don't know if Mr. Donovan, if those are of concern to you, or if it's these these larger ones that are sort of depicted on the slides. I know the slides aren't up yet, but the large shipping container-looking UPS thing, which I've got. So are we talking about all such regardless of containers regardless of size, or is it the larger ones?
Well, the small ones bother me too, but it sounds like they're just going in at will anyway, so I, yeah, the large one bothers me a lot. The small ones are going in basically like mailboxes. It seems like wherever they want, I mean, do we even know if we just all of a sudden they pop up and they have one traditionally, historically that has been the case, they just pop up for convenience? And and it really is, it's as much a convenience, and frankly, it's predominantly a convenience for the business owners there because they tend to be the ones that use them the most for their own for their own business. You know, what we've tried to do in anticipation, as as Ms. Mitchell mentioned, we've gotten some inquiries about these larger units in the recent past. What we tried to do is say, well, if they have to exist, then we want them on the side of the buildings, we want, or the rear of the buildings, we want them screened from view from the right-of-way and lit. And I think that's one of the other considerations that we looked at closely when we were revising these rules, is that there is a safety issue here that you want to be somewhat cognizant of. You know, if you put them in too remote a location or you hide them too much, then you do have some issues there. We'll we'll obviously will desire security cameras, and they'll be required to be lit. But that was just some of what we were thinking. And of course, it certainly counts as a prerogative where they go. We haven't had to deal with them on an exterior lot at this point, although you know what they look like if you visited the Great Lakes Mall. Yeah, I don't know if council agrees with me, but I don't agree with those. Like this this picture I'm looking at, it's looks like it's on the side of a gas station, looks like it's almost like in a couple parking spots, but I just, if there's anything we can do to regulate where those go or have any kind of control, I would like to try to put that in the language. I don't know if Mr. Zeeman can do that or.
It would simply be a prohibition. In other words, the just differentiate based on the size of the collection boxes. The administration could, council agrees that that's good policy, allow for the administration to approve the smaller ones, which is, as noted, just seem to pop up anyway, and simply prohibit the location, exterior location of these larger ones, you know, over those minimum dimensions.
I don't have a problem with that.
It only requires a rational basis, and I think as Mr. Philippiak indicated, these can be present safety issues, and I think that standing alone is more than a rational basis to to support their prohibition. Certainly, now, if they if the council want to get a little bit deeper into it, are there certain zoning districts where they might? are there certain zoning districts where they might be appropriately cited? Now, we're getting into planning issues, and I'm not really sure that that's something that I could necessarily speak to. But that's certainly an option, to find appropriate zoning districts for these types of containers.
How about this? How about they lease some of our empty retail spaces? You pull up, you go in, just like, I mean, this is almost like the UPS and the Amazon that you can go to and go in and get your package, but now we got them out in the parking lot. This could be sitting next to a building with two spots that needed to be leased. I don't know. I don't know if I'm for this, or have any kind of.
Mr. Donovan, did you have a comment?
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm following that. When you talk about going into the industrial areas, these would typically be retail products people would be coming to pick up, and I'm just not quite sure how they would blend well in an industrial area. Where would they be in the parking lots of industrial areas? I mean.
Well, yeah, yeah, I don't have a problem with that either. I mean, if somebody, if somebody, what if somebody in an industrial area doesn't mind that they have this next to their building, and they put it in, and then, but like I go back to some of our empty spaces, lease, lease those, come in and go get your package, a lit, a lit area. I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna have a, you could lease a spot and have it open 24 hours. Go in and get your package, have it lit, have security cameras, have it on, on the main road, go in, park your car, it's lit, and go get your package. But I don't know, I don't know if these, these are gonna be popping up, and I don't know how, how great they're gonna look.
Mr. Blake.
Kathy, I have a question for you. In my time on the planning commission, we used to wrestle with ice machines. Some ice machines, people wanted to put them on the walkways with, um, how is this gonna handle that? We, you know, we used to hear from a lot of, of business owners whenever they would talk about ice machines, they've been allowed in other places because they're grandfathered in. Is this gonna change under, under that, or is there still a prohibition on ice machines?
Prohibit them. If, if a plan were to come forward, and we actually had language that basically strongly encouraged them to be inside, but we got further conversations with the law department, it's gonna prove to be a little bit problematic from a defensibility standpoint. So what we said was, okay, if you want to put them outside the building, then you gotta go through the plan review process, which to me, in some ways, is a put it inside, you know, but if you, if you really want it outside, then you have to go through this process. And if you do go through the process, we're gonna, we're gonna tell you where it can be located, you know? The most recent gas station, the Getgo, not that they had an ice machine, but they had the propane exchange there is outside, which we don't always see, but we made sure that, you know, it was properly concealed and screened, and it wasn't an area, I mean, it's, it's hard when you're talking about a gas station, it's always a hard example only because it often has access on many sides, you know? So I think, though, giving the ability to regulate where they're placed, and then also, what, what we had talked about at the planning commission when we were reviewing this, if you actually somehow integrate them into the design of the building. So to give you an example, Giant Eagle has a nice alcove, if you will, when you walk in. If it were placed under that, where the carts are, it's not obstructing any walkway area, but it's visible. And I think at the end of the day, I, I, I mean, I know, when I go get ice, I want to know where the ice is located. When, you know, by a particular grocer in the city, it's way in the back of the store, it's not visible, you know? You want to know where it is because you want to run in and get it and want to get out. So to me, having it visible, I think, is a selling point for the store, but we want to be able to also regulate where it is so that it doesn't, again, take away from the aesthetics of the building or the safety of, of walkway areas.
And that would also apply for vending machines in the same way?
I think we're seeing less and less of them, but should, should we see them, they're covered.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Blake, in that, in that respect too, I think for the years that I've been with the city consistently, the administration's recommendation to the planning commission has always been to screen those wherever they are, especially the ice machines and
I can remember a few of them problematic, a beverage store had one, and somebody finally realized it shouldn't have been there. They had no room to move it indoors. So those were, those were the things. Few people would be upset, but that, that's fine. I'm good.
Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
I had a question for the law director, or maybe the administration. So for pre-existing conditions, let's call it, are they grandfathered, for example, the vertical propane versus the horizontal? How would that work?
They would be pre-existing non-conforming use, grandfathered, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Dowling.
Just a quick question. When we're talking on temporary sales, like in the front of the store on the sidewalk, do we have regulations on like the heights of racks for safety reasons? I mean, I've seen like with plants out there, and they're really high, and sidewalks sometimes have a little slope to them for drainage, and they aren't required to be secured in any particular way, or, you know, because people start taking things off in any way, and it could shift.
We don't have anything in the store presently, and that would be something simple add-on.
I think the new code restricts them on sidewalks, but generally speaking.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the ones on sidewalks.
Walkways on their own property, that.
When they put them right on the walkway, and people are walking right in front of them, and other people are pulling stuff off, I could see an incident with that.
I agree. I mean, one would hope that common sense would prevail, but that doesn't always happen.
Doesn't always.
Mr. President?
Liability insurance.
Mr. Donovan. I would make a motion, put this on first reading.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Ordinance number 20-0-075 has received its first reading. Before we move to the next ordinance, IT, can you tell me if the participant, virtual participant has identified a topic? I cannot see on my screen. Okay, then that would be in persons before council at a later time. Thank you. Ordinance number 20-0-076.
An ordinance to authorize transfers of funds, advances of funds, and revisions to appropriations, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Members of council, this ordinance does three things. Firstly, it authorizes a permanent cash transfer to the city's general fund for the city's share of a FEMA grant related to the fire department diesel exhaust system. Secondly, it authorizes two temporary cash advances, both from the city's general fund to be returned at a later date, both related to federal grants, as noted in the legislation, the CDVG current 2020 fund, and the police bulletproof vest fund. And then, thirdly, the ordinance includes numerous appropriation revisions, all related to federal funding, with the exception of a $70,000 increase for the engineering cost on the emergency response building fund. The primary item on this section is a realignment of the appropriations to be more coherent to what has been defined as the, through the treasury department, as substantially dedicated to COVID use of compensation costs, and we are realigning those with this ordinance. Those are related to the CARES Act, which through September, year-to-date, we have received just under $3.3 million, and we will report on that accordingly in just a couple short weeks. I would recommend approval of the ordinance. Thank you.
One moment. Mr. Filippiak, the $70,000 engineering fees on the emergency response building, can you enlighten us what's going on there, and will it create a cost addition to this construction?
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I, I actually think that that's an original appropriation. I think that when that project fund was established, there was a failure to simply appropriate monies for the ongoing engineering fees to manage the project. Is that correct, Mr. Malinowski?
I, I believe that's correct.
It was just a failure to appropriate any money for that upfront.
Thank you. I have a move to suspend in a second. Please call a roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Just call a roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Ordinance number 20-0-076 has been approved. Ordinance number 20-0-077.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Dell Inc. for the purpose purchase of six R740 PowerEdge servers under the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And these servers are simply being utilized to maintain our existing operations. They are in excess of six years old, and as the staff report indicates, we typically see age here anywhere from three to seven years, so they have reached their useful life. This is a budgeted item, and from what I understand from Mr. Seon, who is with us here, if you have any questions for him, these are a significant upgrade to, in terms of their operational capacity.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Ordinance number 20-0-077 has been approved. Ordinance number 20-0-078.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Chagrin Valley Paving for the Lake Hopkins Road Resurfacing Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this project is one of our OPWC grant-awarded projects. We did receive approximately $200,000 grant and an $80,000 0% loan for the project, which covers about 20% of the cost. Mr. Swigger?
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Bids are opened on Friday, September 25th, for the Hopkins Road Resurfacing Project. Project will provide an asphalt pavement resurfacing on Hopkins Road from Menor Avenue to Market Street, which is about 1.5 miles in length. The five bids received range from a low bid of approximately $775,000 to a high bid of approximately $859,000. It's been determined that Chagrin Valley Paving in Chagrin Falls, Ohio submitted the lowest bid of $775,49.93. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost was $900,000. As the city manager mentioned, the project's been awarded approximately $200,000 grant and $80,000 loan from the Ohio Public Works Commission to cover about 20% of the project cost, with the majority of the remaining costs funded through the lack of federal funds, up to approximately $620,000. A review of the bid from Chagrin Valley Paving indicates it's in conformance with all contract requirements, and it's recommended that a contract be awarded to them who are experienced and qualified to perform the work in the amount of $775,49.93. The scheduled final completion date for the project is June 18th of 2021, and work is expected to begin in the spring of next year, and your approval is recommended. Thank you.
Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ken, I'm, first off, I'm really happy to see this coming forward. One, one question that I have is, right as you approach Market Street on Hopkins, there is a washboard that's getting worse and worse. Is there any way that we could do some in-house milling on that to try to knock that down before next year? Because we've, we've got like six months.
That's, that's a great question, Mr. Blake, and we've kicked that around ourselves. I'm gonna let Mr. Swigger address that, because that is something that we were pondering ourselves. Mr. Swigger?
As the city manager mentioned, we, we have been looking at some options, depending on how, I guess, how severe the situation gets before the winter. But grinding is an option, also, a temporary overlay is an option. We did get prices from the contractor on Center Street, who's the contractor on Hopkins as well, about doing something, but we do have a range of options, basically grinding or paving. You would, you know, basically be grinding or paving about two lanes, just south, you know, at some, pretty much just north of the bridge, down to the, down to the intersection, the left turn lane and the through lane, but there are, there are some options available with the, with, with this contractor on Center Street, but we haven't decided if we're gonna move forward with the project or not, or that work.
Again, I think to his point, the severity of that, I think that the concern, obviously, public safety is a concern, the nuisance factor there is, is what it is. They weren't inexpensive options, but we're, we haven't eliminated any possibility, so we'll just keep council informed on that.
Because it does seem like it's gradually getting worse.
Well, it's definitely getting worse, and again, because of that somewhat steep descent there, it shoves the asphalt, and it just, and, you know, that's.
Let us know what you come up with. It's, it's a washboard.
Counsel, what is your pleasure? Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Ordinance number 20-0-078 has been approved. Second reading, there are none. Mr. Kirchner?
Yeah, just one question. Can you, how, how much money do we, how many millions of dollars do we presently have out on road repairs and road, road jobs? Was it, did you say something like eight million at one point?
This year, yeah, I, it'll be somewhere between eight and $10 million and before this year's up. And, you know, a great example is the project you just approved, you know, that's a, when it's all said and done, it'll approach a million dollars with engineering and the rest, but a little less, but that's 100% paid for through grant dollars that were achieved through our engineering department's efforts. So that's great. So that allows us to do more. We spent about a million and a half dollars in the subdivisions. We spent, obviously, Center Street is a, is a large project. We've seen a few large projects that, so it, it's, it's been a good year for us from a capital standpoint, despite some of the changes in the economy, because these things were, were planned ahead of time, and, and we received some significant grant dollars. Of course, what's happening in the headlands, road projects, so I think we'll be somewhere in excess of about $8 million this year. Does that sound about right, Mr. Swigger?
Yes, it does. It does. Yes, sir.
So it's a good year for, a big year for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Second reading, there are none. Third reading, there are none. Managers' report. Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And counsel, before your meeting started, I had distributed to you an update to the Menor Economic Development Grant Guidelines, and, you know, of course, each one of these projects comes before council as an ordinance for your review in terms of the details. And I'm not going to get too deep into the details of this, but these are some changes to the general requirements that really are, reflect how we have carried the program out through the years, and, and then, but then, secondly, it kind of divides our program up into what we have defined as a small business grant, which is what we've traditionally been, been applying, the ED grant, and a new component, which is called the International Passport Grant, which provides a similar incentive to try to attract foreign, international manufacturers to the city. And while any company would be eligible, this is sort of being utilized as a manner to jumpstart that, that type of investment in the city. So take a look at that. As I said, any recommendation. As I said, any recommendation that the administration brings will come to you in the form of an ordinance, which you will have the opportunity reviewing in each case. These are not big dollar grants, obviously, compared to the Menor Incentive Grant. But it is a way to help small businesses, retail businesses, get some level of assistance when they expand or when they're considering locating to the city. And in the case of international companies, allowing them to take advantage of the grant for certain, what I will call certain unique characteristics that international companies have, expenses have as they relocate here. Mr. Malcheck, do you want to make any comment on that?
Yes, and that I expect that we will be bringing before council within the next month, probably our first request for an international passport grant, directly attributable to our activities that we have done over the last couple of years on direct investment in our partnership with Medialink Midlands. As council knows, we had our international conference yesterday that was done virtually. Normally, we have these companies come here and are in person and inbound to coordinate with Cleveland Clinic Innovation Summit, but they were here virtually. About 30 different registrants yesterday and went extraordinarily well. Mr. Kirchner, Mr. Landik were generous enough to give some of their time to speak yesterday. But we had representatives of area hospital systems, local companies, speaking with them, a lot of business-to-business networking opportunities for them as well. So I think we're going to have potentially even more prospects coming out of that. And I do want to thank both Ali and Abdullah from our information technology staff for putting together, which is a trying situation sometimes in the time of COVID, a very robust technology that we were able to use very well to coordinate the conference yesterday.
Any questions on that, counsel? You know, feel free to contact me or Mr. Malcheck directly. Again, each of these grant, grants that come forward to you are recommendations. So take a look at that. If you have any questions or concerns, let us know.
Yeah, later in the conference, did the international passport grant get plugged?
Well, I think we were able to announce that we were looking at an incentive program that would be attractive and, you know, with council's blessing, I think this could be a little something that could help with our recruitment.
Yeah, and once we have one on the books, that'll all, good news go out.
Sure. Thank you, counsel. A couple more items to share. The volume of yard waste that residents can set out on their collection day will increase from 12 units to 25 units effective Monday, October 26. A unit is a paper yard waste bag, a container, or a tied bundle of limbs. This amount remains in effect through the end of the program, which is the second full week of December. The fire department wishes to remind people that our residents, that this is fire prevention, that Fire Prevention Week runs from October 4th through the 10th. Cooking is the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries in the United States. This year's 2020 fire prevention theme is "Serve Up: Fire Safety in the Kitchen." So you can learn more about the Menor Fight, learn more on fire safety on the Menor Fire Department's webpage. Again, during the month of October, Menor firefighters will be wearing T-shirts in support of breast cancer awareness. These uniforms are purchased personally by members of our fire department. Chagrin Valley Paving is working on manhole and inlet basin reconstruction, curb and sidewalk repairs on Center Street now as part of that rehab project. Repairs will continue over the next couple of weeks and final paving will follow. Two-way traffic has been and will continue to be maintained daily and overnight lane closures are expected as well. Project completion is expected late this month of October. City of Menor, in partnership with the Chagrin River Watershed Partners, has been awarded a $67,000 grant through the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative to purchase 225 1 1/2-inch caliper trees for Springbrook Park and Civic Center Campus. So again, great job by Stephanie Johnson for scoring once again on a great grant application. 200 trees will be planted at Springbrook, with the remaining 25 to be planted at Civic Center Campus. And the purpose of this project is to intercept rainfall and reduce water runoff with a selection of trees that maximize infiltration and filtration. And the city does have a $17,000 match requirement for the program, which will all be in-kind services. So it's basically free money, which is great. And then finally, counsel, we do have two new businesses that we'd like to give a shout out to. Ivy Women's Center at 8619 Tyler Boulevard and Apex Dermatology at 8140 Norton Parkway. We welcome them to the community and we thank them for their business at this difficult time. And we hope that they have great success going forward. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Clerk's correspondence.
Nothing to report.
Commissions Committee reports, meeting minutes, Tree Commission, August 12, 2020. Municipal Planning Commission, September 10, 2020. Old business. Hearing none. New business. Hearing none. Persons before council. IT, is our participants still waiting? Could you please unmute them? And I would like them to state their name and address for the record and notify them you have four minutes to speak. Please go ahead.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Lynn Novak, 6040 White Oak. This is a problem that began in the spring of 2019. It's concerning the city property right on White Oak. Prior to that, they always did a nice cutting job all the way to the tree line. Last year, in the spring of 2019, they stopped. They only started doing 1/3. So I contacted my councilman. He got involved and got them to go back a little further from the sidewalk, not completely. So I stopped complaining. He stopped doing anything. Move forward. We went through the winter to 2020. I called, I emailed, I complained to Public Works. I received one call and he told me he would contact me about the decision. I haven't been notified. Again, no return calls, no emails. I spoke to the secretary. She told me that she had given the supervisor all my messages. I must say, I'm really, really, really happy to pay taxes and I can't even get a return call or an email. Thanks, Menor. I appreciate that. I hope you like my sarcasm, because that's what it is. I'm not happy at all. I told them, there's been, since, due to the mild winter, there was an influx of ticks. I said that grass needed to be cut all the way back to the perimeter of the tree line and it needed to be treated. Nothing. I have a four-season room that overlooks that and it's an ice rink to me and to my family. There is a hill there that little children could sled ride on, but they're no longer going to be able to because the grass back by the perimeter of the tree line is grown. And, and you just can't. The neighborhood kids used to come down here and go down to the creek. They had to walk through high grass to get down to it. There used to be a neighbor who used to play ball. He can't no longer because the dog probably can't even find the dog, or find the ball, I'm sorry. And now the problem with coyotes with that higher grass, I'm sure coyotes can hover and get into that. Now, I'd like to know, would the city approve me if I only cut 1/3 or 2/3 of my grass? Heck, no. I'd have a citation on my front door immediately. Immediately.
Ms. Novak, your time is just about out. Could you give us your phone number? And perhaps Mr. Philippiak can have someone from Public Works get back to you on this matter?
I've been waiting for that for a year and a half.
Well, if you'd like to, this is your opportunity.
Well, it should have been already prior to this. I'm really very, very angry with the whole council. I have emailed and, and I could not get in one night. And I heard from one councilperson and their email to me, the main part was that they were sorry that I couldn't get into the meeting. Nothing about my problem with this crappy-looking city property next to me when I take care of my property. Yes, you can have my, what do you want? My, my, what do you want? My phone number?
Yes, or you can call this council clerk tomorrow morning.
Do you know how many times I've done this?
Okay, then give us your phone number, please.
Okay. 440-227-97. Obviously, you don't deal real well with an angry resident. I don't have, this has not been four minutes. You don't want to hear anymore. You don't want people.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kirchner?
Quick, you know, a couple of years ago, someone asked me about that down there and I, I called and I thought I was told that that was like, although they had cut it in the past, it was determined it was some type of a wetlands or protected area. Does that resonate with anyone in the, you know?
It does, Mr. Kirchner. That resonates with me because that's what I was told. That at one time they did cut it all the way down to the creek and then they stopped mowing it because it was so wet, they couldn't really get down there. But, you know, they, I don't remember a second call from, from the lady, but I do remember the first call and, and they, they did go out and cut more of it down just this past year. But I, well, we'll have to find out from Public Works what the reasoning is behind it.
Well, Mr. President, Mr. Krieger, I could address that. I mean, there are a lot of bits and parcels that the city owns, as council is aware, all over the community. And there is a, there is a different standard for the maintenance of developed versus undeveloped properties. That is an undeveloped common area that was essentially bestowed upon the city, I think, by a, by a permanent easement. I'm not, I believe we own the property now, but there was a point in time years ago where it was main, where it was maintained in its entirety. You are correct that it is a very wet area and is very difficult to mow. It isn't required to be mowed under the terms of our code and it's not really an area that the city had maintained for the purpose of general recreation. It's not a defined park. It's one of these common areas that the city inherited when that area was developed. We, we, we don't, there are, there are many properties in the community that we don't keep mowed down in the same manner that a developed residential property would. We don't have the ability to do that, for one, because of the amount of property that we have. And again, these are not areas that, that are generally open for recreational use. Sure, they get used, like a lot of little patches of woods that the city owns get used, you know, by kids who, who play in them in a similar fashion off of that same property. The retention ponds out there used to have fish and people fished in them. They, they have silted up over time, but they still function as they are intent, as they were intended to. We don't dredge those. We've had requests over the years to have that happen. But, you know, not all publicly owned property is intended for public use, I guess, is the point I'm trying to make. And there are bits and pieces all over the city in different, in the various wards where frankly, we discourage people from using them because they carry liability as well.
That's, that's fine, but I think the question at hand, I mean, we already addressed that. It's pretty wet and I think she was only talking about the west side of White Oak, not the east side, because both slowed down, both were being cut more than they are now. But I think the question has to be answered now by the administration is why nobody from administration is contacting a woman back concerning her problem?
I, I don't know who she spoke to, Mr. Krieger. She didn't speak to me. This is the first time hearing about.
She's saying she called the secretary over at Public Works several times. She was told that Public Works was given, the messages were given to Public Works. So I would say maybe start there.
Yeah, we absolutely will.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kirchner?
I would make a motion to adjourn to a new executive session, new conference with the law director regarding three pending lawsuits. Andrews versus City of Menor, Bolton versus City of Menor, Ralph Victor Construction versus City of Menor.
Julie, please call a roll.
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. President, I would move to begin a regular council session.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Or adjourn.